We sent flowers, okay? So I didn't know until this morning. So. Are we ready, guys?
I'm ready to roll.
Okay. Let's go do it. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the work session on Monday, May 12, 5:00. As I look around the table, we have two councilwomen missing this evening, Councilman Sherry Loretano and Councilwoman Wally Campbell. We have one item on tonight's work session. We will receive an update on the city's draft transportation master plan. And Luke Albert, City Traffic Engineer, to present. Luke, and your guests, is there anybody coming to the table with you? And would you introduce your guests for the public?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce Michael Labianca, Laura Paddy, Matthew Taunton, and Faisal Talgary, who are all from HDR, and will be presenting the update to the draft transportation master plan.
They probably aren't guests, but I wanted to do that.[91.61][91.61](Laughter). So, welcome. Thank you again for being here. We're all anticipating this. I think we've all been reading the manual, and so we're excited. So, go ahead.
Very well. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lord, members of the councils. So, as Luke mentioned, my name is Michael Labianca. Actually, I had the opportunity to be here and present an update on the transportation plan back in January. We're here tonight, following the release of the draft plan, to walk through the plan with you and answer questions, and talk about specific content of the plan. The plan is a master plan, and it's based on all modes. And the plan includes goals and objectives in Section 2 that sort of outline the purpose and where we're going with the plan. And then, the next section talks about the existing conditions. And in that section, we lay out some of the base assumptions that the plan is built on, because we're looking out 20 years into the future. And so, it's important to recognize what are some of the forecasts that we're looking at, because that's really driving the projects. Finally, before we begin, I just want to mention that, as it is a master plan, it's anticipated that the plan would be revisited every five years or so, depending on growth and development in the city, just to revisit those assumptions, revisit some of the goals, and make sure that the plan is reflecting the city's aspirations. Real quickly, the overview, we've kind of laid it out somewhat like the plan, which is in six sections. What we'd like to do is just kind of give a quick summary of some background information and assumptions. We did discuss that in January, and focus more so on the recommendations. Some of the things that we'd like your input on tonight, certainly, is that list of recommendations. We introduced a concept of a multi-use path concept that's presented in the earlier transportation plan, in the general plan, but we're revisiting that and want to talk a little bit more about that. And finally, the issue of truck routes. This graphic summarizes the last 18 months of the plan and our work on it. We had a public meeting, or actually rode on the coattails of the general plan, open houses in February of 2013. And that's really how we kicked off the project. At that same time, we formed a subcommittee of the general plan committee, and we met with that group five times, most recently in April, to present and discuss the draft plan. Early in the process, we met with stakeholders, formal interviews with them, to talk about their interests and needs and concerns regarding transportation in the city. And that group include business, neighboring jurisdictions, and local agencies, such as Maricopa County. Finally, we've been meeting recently with the, I guess, for lack of a better term, the project management team. So, members of the Transportation Department, Public Works, and City Manager's Office since January, to sort of guide us through the last months of the plan, and make sure that the plan reflects all of the elements that the city would like to have reflected in that. So with that, I'm going to talk a little bit about the background of the plan. And this is in Section 3. I just want to point out that Section 3 really summarizes a lot of what was in the existing and future conditions report that we presented early on in the study. And that's really a snapshot of the city's transportation system. So, in the development of the plan, we were out collecting traffic counts at over 80 locations. So that information was all the most recent. We used the most recent MAG travel demand model to forecast what future volumes would be. And we updated the city's synchro model, which is a model that looks at intersection operations. So we added some intersections to that model, and that model's used to sort of optimize the operation of traffic signals through the city, and works in conjunction with the city's ITS system, to make sure that the traffic lights are communicating with each other, that they're synchronized, so that you can maximize traffic flow through the Just mentioned a couple of studies that we looked at that are critical to the city's future growth and development. On the upper left of the screen, you can see the Loop 303. We have it on the left and the right, because we're really looking at two elements of construction. One is the work that would continue to extend the Loop 303 south of the interchange with I-10 to Van Buren. That's Phase 1 of the graphic on the left. And then, the second phase of that work would extend the Loop 303 south to the future SR-30. And that planning is going on now, and construction of that first phase up to Van Buren, as you well know, will be initiated in 2016. The graphic in the middle there is SR-30. SR-30 is what is referred to as the I-10 reliever. Again, I know that you're familiar with that. The Arizona Department of Transportation is in the process of developing an environmental assessment, the environmental background work for that, where they may decide a preferred alternative. We're showing both of the existing alternatives from the public meeting several years ago now, in that graphic. On the right is the extension of Loop 303 to the south. That document is also in progress as a feasibility document, but several years ago, the Western alignment was identified by the City of Goodyear as the preferred alignment. And that project is a little bit further out in the future, but it's an important element of the future transportation system. So, we looked at that pretty closely as we developed the plan. Finally, the highway shield, you may be familiar with at the bottom of the graphic, is I-11. And it's received a lot of play in the last year. I-11 is a proposed interstate connecting Phoenix with Las Vegas area, and then potentially extending south to Mexico and all the way to Canada. I-11, at least one of the alternatives passes through the City of Goodyear as a Haciampa freeway, and that's recognized in the plan as a Haciampa freeway planned alignment. If I didn't mention earlier, please feel free to stop me at any time to ask a question. I mentioned the background for the plan relies on assumptions as far as growth. And this was a graphic that we shared with you in January. I just want to revisit it, because it's pretty remarkable. The growth that the city has experienced in the last 20 years has been substantial, and there's anticipated growth through the future that will rival that growth. So that by 2023, the city's population is anticipated to be 130,000. The reason I mentioned 2023 is because that is the new horizon for the capital improvement plan, looking out at 10 years. And so, I mention that, because we used the same growth assumptions that the general plan used. They're very similar. They established a low, a medium, and a high threshold for growth. We use the median threshold. It's consistent with what's in the MAG model, so it was consistent with our travel forecasts. But I want to point out that the infrastructure investment plan used a much more conservative, low-growth scenario, for a number of reasons, but mostly because of the challenges that legislation requires, that that money be spent, that that development actually occur. There's a lot of constraints on the IIP programming that require that they use a more conservative projection. So, we're not exactly in sync with that, and I point that out, because we're using somewhat higher growth projections for the future. And I also want to point out, if you look on the graphic, that 40% of the future growth in 2040 is anticipated to be south of the Gila River. And that's an important consideration, as we look at the next slide, which is what we're forecasting for the Gila River crossings. As you know, there are three bridges in the city across the Gila River, Cotton Lane, Estrella Parkway, and Bullard Avenue. Those three, today, carry a combined total of about 15,000 trips a day. But by 2025, it's anticipated that the trips will increase up to over 70,000 per day. And so, one of the recommendations that's identified in the plan is an expansion of the Estrella Crossing of the Gila River to four lanes. So with that background, just a little bit of understanding, we developed recommendations for each of the travel modes that we're going to talk about tonight. And I've asked Laura and Matthew here tonight to talk specifically to the trails component, or the non-motorized, rather, and also the transit. In each case, we looked at a five-year horizon, a 10-year horizon, and a long-term, 20-year horizon. And jumping right to the short-term roadway improvements, you'll see that this section of the plan opens with sort of a narrative discussion of the reasoning behind each of the improvement projects that we've identified. Then there's a table showing a little information, including the cost, the estimated cost of those projects. And then, finally, there's a map that identifies them. So we've kind of combined some of that information here, just to sort of identify where improvements are occurring. In the short term, the majority of the improvements are in the northern portion of the city, and the majority of those improvements are intersection enhancements. And the reason being is that, well, there's several reasons. One is that you're really able to maximize the transportation system when you focus on intersection operation. And so, before any of the roadway widens can occur, the intersection has to be performing to accommodate that. So, we're kind of doing some of these projects in advance of what future roadway widening projects, but also to optimize the system, to keep it operating efficiently at a level of service that's acceptable to the city. While we've identified a number of intersections, and some of those intersections today don't have traffic signals, it's important to point out that the plan doesn't actually identify that a signal is necessary at a location. It's only projecting that a signal may be necessary. And really, in order to justify putting a signal in, you actually have to go through a series of nine warrants that identify level of service, local land uses, a number of different factors that go into that. In fact, we're looking a little more closely right now at the intersection of Yuma Road and Canyon Trails Boulevard, doing exactly that kind of warrant, to determine if a signal is warranted at that location. I mentioned, too, the ITS. We incorporate by reference intelligent transportation systems. There's a plan that the city has adopted in 2008 or 2009 that lays that out. We revisited that plan and carried forward the recommendations by incorporating it by reference. So while we identified some additional recommendations for ITS, the ITS plan that the city adopted in 2009 is incorporated into the master plan by reference. And most of the funding, actually, I just confirmed this with Luke a moment ago, most of the funding for some of the ITS improvements is done through the congestion mitigation, air quality funding, that's a federal funding. The city does carry a small portion of each of those projects, but much of that funding is through the C-MAC funds. And I guess that's kind of characteristic of a lot of transportation projects. While the cost of these 21 projects is identified as $38 million, probably spread out over a number of different sources, besides the general fund, the infrastructure improvement program that recommends projects for impact fees, developer-driven projects that might develop half-street improvements. Any of these sources would be used to fund the projects that are identified in the plan. In the midterm, I mentioned earlier the need for additional capacity across the Gila River, and this is where I identify that need. The need doesn't just require the bridge, it would require widening of Estrella Parkway to the bridge, and in the course of that, you would also have to cross canal and widen that bridge, too. So there's two bridges involved in this widening, as well as a segment of Estrella Parkway to accommodate the ultimate four lanes across the Gila River on the Estrella Parkway.
I guess that would change Vineyard, too?
At that time, that's correct, Mayor Lord. The Vineyard and Estrella Parkway intersection would be revised at that time, because you'd be going from two lanes to a four-lane divided roadway at that intersection. Looking forward to long-term, again, it's a pretty extensive list of projects. In this case, a number of the projects are actually south of the Gila River. And it's really difficult to anticipate when those projects would come online, based on the projected growth that's occurring down there. But we made a best estimate of where those improvements might be needed, based on the modeling that we did with Maricopa Association of Governments. By 2035, the forecast is for a population of 200,000. So a lot of the projects that are identified out to that timeframe are contingent upon that growth. And so, the projects are really tied more to the population than the timeframe. They may occur sooner if growth were to accelerate, they may occur later if growth was to occur later. And as I mentioned earlier, the need to look at the plan every five years may be relevant, because some of that growth may actually occur in the northern part of the city with intensification of the uses, as opposed to in the southern part. That development may wait for additional infrastructure to come into play before being One of the things that we've tried to do with the 2035 plan is look at some regional improvements, which occur both north and south of the river, that may be carried forward in the update of what might be referred to as Prop 500, or the reinstatement of the Prop 400 RTP. And so, it's important that the city recognize what those needs may be, have it in an adopted document, so that as you go into the planning for that next round of the regional transportation plan, those needs are identified and can be looked at as potentially funded through the RTP. The next slide is our recommendation for truck routing. In 2002, the city adopted a truck routing plan, which identified a number of routes as truck routes, alternate truck routes, local trucks only. What we've done is come up with a system that's, I think, a lot simpler and pretty direct. So to describe the operation of the truck routing plan, is that those routes that are identified as designated truck routes, so that would be I-10, MC-85, Cotton Lane, and Loop 303, would be the routes where trucks would be designated to operate. Trucks originating or destined for any location in the City of Goodyear, they could essentially go to any business, any operation, and they would do that by way of the most direct arterial route. They would go from the designated truck route to their destination, or originating in the location in Goodyear, travel by the most direct arterial route to the designated truck routes, and then continue on their way. If it's through trucks that we're talking about, then they would be required to operate only on the designated truck route in the city. So trucks passing through the City of Goodyear would not be able to legally operate across the city on McDowell or Van Buren. If their destinations were outside of the city, then they would be required to use a designated truck routes for that.
Go ahead. I guess I was waiting for a pause. Nobody's talked about Saraville, nobody talked about anything. And so, Vice Mayor?
I think you touched on it a bit there, but when I see these hundreds of millions of dollars as this goes out, and you did mention getting into the regional plan, so that some of that money may show up, you know, as a project of MAG or whatever. But as you laid all this out, and probably more for Luke, do you have some dollars that are matching this up or coming close to matching this up?
Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Pacillo, there's no dollars that match this, but like Michael mentioned, a good amount of this would be like offsite improvements in these roadway segments. As the adjacent properties develop, they'd have to develop a half-street improvement in a lot of these roadway segments. The bridge costs are a very substantial portion of that, like the midterm improvements. There is not really any outside funding source right now. So that would have to come from city dollars.
What does that bridge cost for both the widening, and then, would you say, the other bridge that's got a... How much of that money's in that hundred and some?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember, the bridge itself, we estimate it at $27 million, using just a square footage cost for a typical structure like that. Then, all the ancillary improvements, including the widening of Estrella Parkway and crossing over the canal, would bring that total to about $35 million.
So we're looking at probably grants for getting into a regional funding to fund that? I don't know of any dollars that we got coming in down the road that's going to cover those type of costs, unless I'm missing something.
Yeah. There's, you know, there's several reasons why we want to look out and make sure that we capture all the necessary projects. I know that the IIP program is looking at a three-year of improvements, and will be revisited probably in three to five years, as you go forward. And so, some of these dollars for those crossings may be associated with that southern planning area, because the need is really coming from travel to and from that area. The RTP, because it's a regional facility, may be one option. You know, the city isn't, you know, general obligation bonds wouldn't be available before 2018, but again, in this timeframe, that is one possibility amongst any number of possibilities that I guess you would consider.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. When I see the numbers, and I realize you have to put it down to paper, you got to have the plan before you go asking for money on the regional side, and I appreciate that. So hopefully, we'll have some good luck when it comes to that, because obviously, if growth matches to what you have out there on the schedule, then that's going to be a problem if that's not widened, or those improvements made.
Joanne?
Thank you. A couple of questions. So first of all, glad to see that Saraville is not a truck route within our city. Could you talk a little more about the future truck route on Camelback, though? What's the thought behind that? And where's this traffic coming along that area?
The way we've identified the truck routes through the city is to have, if you will, alternate north-south routes and east-west routes. MC-85, the most southern route, is identified, I-10. And then, Camelback just provides another opportunity for trucks traveling through the northern part of the city. At this time, Camelback Road isn't able to accommodate that kind of traffic. There are improvements identified in the plan to expand it to its full arterial, major arterial section in the future. And at that time, it would be an appropriate truck route for some of the traffic that's not necessarily traveling on I-10, but traveling through the northern part of the city. And so that's why it's been identified.
I just wasn't sure, just with the land uses on Camelback compared to, say, Glendale, why this was chosen? That was the only reason. And, you know, I understand Vice Mayor Pacillo's question about the bridge, and, you know, it is going to take collaborations to build, to do that, because just the one that's on Cotton Lane, I thought that cost us $45 million. Wasn't that...
About $45 million, yes.
So when you said 27, I was like, "Oh, really? What deal are you taking?"
You're not there with a deal, huh?
Exactly. Okay. I have some other questions, but I'll wait until you finish. Thank you.
Ryan?
And Mayor and Councilmember Osborne, if I may, also, on Camelback Road, as was pointed out, the east-west, we really felt the need to have something north of I-10. And what we're trying to do by having it on Camelback Road is avoiding it using Indian School is a big part of that as well, because that's a lot more commercial, a lot more residential. So this was probably the safest of those alternatives. This will also require us to work closely with the adjacent cities as well, to make sure that it works within their jurisdictions.
And is it, would that be considered Litchfield Park?
It would be Litchfield Park.
Planning area?
Could be in the planning area, because just north of that is a county, as you get into the county island, so.
Have you had those conversations?
As of this point...
We have not had those conversations, but since we wouldn't be looking at opting at a truck route at this time, it's more of a future truck route, we'd be reaching out to those agencies as we look closer at trying to make it a truck route.
Well, just understanding that they're going through the same planning scenarios that we are, you might as well have the conversation sooner than later, that's all.
We'll certainly reach out to them.
Well, it's always difficult, because nobody wants the truck trapper going by their homes, you know? And homes have been developed on just about every street, so we don't have those isolated areas in which we can get trucks through. So all the cities are going to have to cooperate and contend with it. And, you know, Litchfield Park really shops in Goodyear for their, bulk of their shopping. So that's how we get the products to the store. So, yeah, it is difficult, but we will have to be talking through that, so. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. If I may, just one clarification on the bridge. The bridge widening that we're anticipating for Estrella Parkway would be adding two lanes, so it's not a new bridge. I guess we're just adding capacity by adding a parallel structure, which is probably why there's somewhat of a cost differential between what was spent on Cotton Lane and what's anticipated for Estrella Parkway.
Gotcha.
With that, we're going to transit to, transit, transfer, transition to transit, and Matthew Taunton's going to walk us through these slides.
Thanks, Michael. Good evening, everyone. I was just going to start with a slide that kind of provides a general overview of what the existing transit system is today. For those that aren't familiar with it, basically, there's a variety of services that are provided in Goodyear and adjacent to Goodyear, the most notable being local bus service that operates today on Van Buren via the Route 3 and McDowell via the Route 17. Those routes are notable, because there were substantial increases in service that took place in January of 2014, that actually doubled the frequency of those bus routes. That had been something that had been on the books, so to speak, for over 10 years, so it's actually a huge improvement. And had those improvements not been made in January, that would have been our first recommendation. The other services that are shown here is there's substantial express bus service in the I-10 corridor that's been implemented in the last few years. There's two routes that currently serve the Goodyear Park and Ride, which is at the northwest quadrant of I-10 and Dyser Road. There's several other bus services in Goodyear. The Route 685, that's what's called a rural route. It operates between Aho, Gila Bend, and Phoenix, with five trips a day, but it does pass through Goodyear, so there are some folks within Goodyear that are taking that service. And then, the other route shown on the map is the Avondale Zoom, which is a circulator that operates in Avondale, but touches portions of Goodyear. And actually, it was preceded by a route, the Star 131, which was really the first transit service in the Southwest Valley, and which used to extend into portions of Goodyear.
I have to say, it's now the public is talking about this. When I come to my council meetings, I see the 685, the double bus that comes across Bullard down McDowell. It's kind of exciting, to actually see a bus in our city, you know, lots of times. So, and I notice other people are talking about that. "Oh, we saw a bus the other day," you know? And I actually saw someone get off the bus. And it was very exciting. So we do appreciate that. But on, you know, what, the Zoom, you know, it would be nice if staff was always on the lookout for bus opportunities like Avondale got. I don't remember where they received those, but they heard that they were used. Is that correct? Does somebody want to just kind of brief us on that, and how that came about? Anybody? Nobody knows?
No, I know a little bit of the history, which is essentially, the Avondale Zoom, there were some funding opportunities that Avondale had at the time, because of its classification as an urbanized area. And there was support, federal funding support for operations that allowed them to basically advance that service. So it was similar to how some of the earlier bus services in the Southwest Valley was. But I don't know the specifics of the vehicles themselves.
The buses weren't used. Chris, let's have Christie come out and talk about that a minute.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just for, I just want the council to be reviewed on that, because as we talk to people out in the public, you kind of need to know, you know, well, how come they got it? How come? Go ahead.
It was a relatively unique opportunity, Mayor, because one of the other circulator services in the valley, in Sun City, Sun City Area Transit... services in the valley, in Sun City, Sun City Area Transit, actually declared bankruptcy and their vehicles were available. So the city of Avondale just kind of latched on to that opportunity as a pilot program to use those buses to create the Zoom route and just check and see if that was going to be a viable option for them. Come to today, and I think just in the last six, well, the last year or so, they're phasing a lot of those buses out because they had a lot of miles on them anyway.
Okay.
And I think they only had three or four. But the, now they are transitioning to those larger silver buses that the Aho-Hila Bend Route uses. So they are going to, not the standard, what's the 17, a 30?
A 40-foot bus.
40-foot bus. They're, they're going to a 30-foot sort of, it's got a truck engine, but it's got the bus in the back and, and that's what you're seeing coming around Goodyear. So Avondale is now using that vehicle as well for the Zoom. So they are transitioning away from those used vehicles paying for the bigger buses.
Thank you. Not that I wish anybody had bankruptcy, but if anything happens like that, we should have our eyes open for something.
Christine?
Real quick, Christine, don't they, I, I recall a couple of years ago, having some transportation conference and Avondale was there with us, actually might have been a chamber function, and they were talking about, don't they receive like a million dollars a year in grant money or something for?
It, it's pretty much what Matthew was telling you about.
Okay.
And we are part of that urbanized area. Goodyear is in that. There's, there's a set dollar amount for that entire urbanized area, and that includes us, Avondale, Litchfield Park, parts of Buckeye, parts of, little bit of Glendale. It's an odd kind of region that's been created by the census. We have about 10 years, but the apportionment has to be shared by all. And we would have to have some sort of a dedicated revenue source to go beyond that type of funding. Now, we are able, and we have been able to make some improvements, this being the 30-minute headways, changes on 17, changes on Route 3 as a, as a result of that urbanized area funding. But the other thing to keep in mind is after 10 years, that designation changes again when the census is done. And if you've already committed to service that you're funding on that regional, on that urbanized area funding, you have to be able to replace that funding with something else because it will go away. But this is, this urbanized area is permanent. It will stay this way. If anything, it's going to grow. And we won't be, we should not be competing with the city of Phoenix for funding, which is good news for us because of the amount of growth that's gone on in the Southwest Valley. So there's potential in the future to continue getting resources from the federal government, but that always comes with the obligation of making sure that you're able to back that up should that funding go away.
And none of these systems or even a regional system would qualify for like a Tiger grant? Is it not large enough for that kind of? Do you want to handle that?
Yeah, Tiger grants typically involve either funding for planning or for capital improvements, so it could be used to pay for the vehicles themselves. It would not be able to pay for revenue to operate the service. So it'd be capital dollars primarily.
Tiger has been a successful program. We're glad to see it keeps coming back, but it's, it has to be a program or a project that's done regionally.
Right.
And then MAG would go out and we would have to get support from other cities so that, because only one or two projects move forward from the state to get that grant.
It'd have to be really big.
It would have to be a big deal. But that's not anything new for us.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Sorry for that little pause, but that was important.
No, that's great. So moved ahead here to what the short-term improvements, similar to roadway, we have three planning horizons. And in the short term, the improvements are fairly simplistic, the first of which is to actually extend the Route 3 farther into Goodyear so that it would reach Litchfield Road, and then extend it north on Litchfield up to McDowell. Transit service in the metropolitan area is structured on, on a grid system, and there's huge benefits when you have intersecting bus routes, particularly bus routes that have frequency of 30 minutes or better, which, which these two routes do. The other things that we're recommending in the short term is that additional trips be added to the Route 562 and/or 563, which is the express bus service in the I-10 corridor. As you know, the Goodyear Park and Ride has been very successful. Its first phase is, is more or less nearing capacity. It's not at capacity, but it's approaching it. So that would be our, our short-term recommendation. Now, the midterm, this is where there are substantial changes to the transit network in Goodyear. The first thing is to be looking at for the first time fixed route bus service on north-south arterials, specifically Litchfield and Dyser. Now, the challenge here is that because of the geographic boundaries in this part of the region, any successful north-south bus service is going to rely on partnerships with adjacent jurisdictions. So, for example, any route on Dyser must be partnered with Avondale and jurisdictions to the north, the County Island, Glendale, et cetera. The other thing that we're, we've identified in, in the midterm is actually a planning area for a circulator. So when you see the kind of purple shaded area, that's been identified as a potential area where a circulator could serve. Now, the reason there isn't a specific route identified for the circulator is that it's best planning practices for circulators to actually do kind of a very bottoms-up analysis to establish a route, working with partner jurisdictions. And I, I know you know, the Councilmember, Omen, know the history of Start Route, and that route, when it started, it was very specific in serving pockets throughout the Southwest Valley. So I think the same approach should be taken for the circulator. So that's why a route isn't shown but the, but the general zone. Finally, the, the long-term planning horizon, there's a couple of key additions. The first is really the transition of express bus service in the I-10 corridor, which operates in the peak direction during the peak hour, to perhaps considering all-day express bus service in the I-10 corridor. That would be service that perhaps would be partnered with the existing I-10 West bus service that Phoenix operates. And this is a line on the map that very well could be included in the future regional transportation plan. Valley Metro at the regional level is looking at express bus corridors for all-day service, and I-10 would be one of the most highest priority in the region. The other thing that's identified as a line on the map is commuter rail. The Yuma West branch of the Union Pacific Railroad goes through basically parallels MC-85. There's been lots of previous planning work done for commuter rail. MAG completed a commuter rail study in 2008, which recommended various corridors. The Phoenix Southeast subdivision, which basically goes from Tempe to Queen Creek, Gilbert and Queen Creek, that was rated as the number one corridor. But as part of that, it was recommended that that be partnered with either the Yuma West Corridor or Grand Avenue. So the benefit to Goodyear is, is that the Yuma West Corridor was sort of attached to the highest priority corridor. And more than anything else, the, the ADOT Phoenix-Tucson Passenger Rail Project that's currently being studied, that will probably ultimately determine the phasing of future commuter rail in this region, but it's certainly something that we wanted to address. The corridor itself is fairly straightforward. It would follow the existing Union Pacific, Yuma West branch.
Good question. I know that, you know, this is obviously based for Goodyear, that's what the discussion's about, but in the past, I've had conversations with some of our larger employers that are in the Cotton Lane area, you know, further, further west. Have you had a lot of conversation with Buckeye? Because I know many of their employees in some of these larger Goodyear employment centers are Buckeye residents. And I know that, you know, kind of the way we're looking at almost stops at, you know, Pebble Creek on this, on this, you know, imaginary line, but, you know, how, how far west do some of these routes really continue on?
That's a, a great question. I think for, for the short-term, that basically where the Route 17 kind of shows terminating Pebble Creek there, that would be the western terminus of local fixed route bus service. I, I don't want to speak for Buckeye, but I know in the past, they've expressed interest primarily in express bus service in the I-10 corridor and a circulator that would, would serve that jurisdiction. There hasn't been a lot of interest in extending local bus service on McDowell or Van Buren, but that very well could change in the future. It should be noted, though, that transit service in this region, it's priced out on a cost-per-mile basis. So when you're adding incremental distances, it's very expensive. Even if you can get this, the speed up, like using a freeway corridor, it still costs the same because it's contracted on a per-mile basis. It'd be very expensive for them to add service. That concludes the transit portion.
Any other questions for that? Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Thank you, Matthew. Council, Mayor and Council? We get to the non-motorized portion, and the system that we are recommending, we worked not only looking at what was going on with the roadway and with transit, but we've also been working with Parks and Rec consultant, particularly because all the non-motorized facilities really cross those boundaries between the on-street and the off-street. As we talked about in the January meeting, Goodyear has really gone, I guess, maybe above and beyond in a lot of their standards. You've got eight-foot sidewalks on both sides, on arterials and collectors and bike lanes. So really looking at being multimodal, it's certainly, you know, moving in that direction. A lot of our recommendations then are based more on some of those extra things that kind of create a whole community of non-motorized. So in the short term, we identified a few locations where there were some missing sidewalks due to vacant lots and whether that, you know, those connections could be made now or wait for the development. But really, we were looking at setting the stage for future. And one of the recommendations was the finding either a position or more staff time for bike ped coordination. So some of the other items that we talk about in the midterm, the long-term, are the wayfinding and the signage programs, education programs, looking at setting up bike events. We, excuse me, we recommended a bike lane and sidewalk inventory, which would really help in terms of just keeping a, and that would include both on-street and off-street facilities, and that really would help.
Can I stop you right there?
Sure.
Is there, is there, you know, what you're talking about, because that's been, every report we've gotten now, we've, the public have talked about paths and bike paths, and, I mean, it's exciting. Every study we've come up with now, the public wants that. Is it worthwhile sometimes in some areas to connect it for the city to pay for that sidewalk area? Is there that possibility or that, you know, in those areas that need that and then get paid back at a later time if there was a payback by development? I don't know. Tell, can you just elaborate? Maybe, who wants to take that?
David Ramirez to, from Engineering to talk about that.
Yeah, I'm just curious because, you know, when, sometimes development takes a long time in certain areas, and we have the disconnected part of it, and the public really wants it. It's like a park. So is it, is it worth it for us to go ahead and put a, an area together and connect it and, and shrub it and so forth? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Lord. A few years ago, as we were getting requests from certain neighborhoods for that very reason, that there were sections of streets that weren't improved, that didn't have sidewalks, and on either side there would be. So we, we began to show some sidewalk segments in our CIP plan, maybe starting three, three or four years ago, over the next five years from that point. And, and, and some of them, for example, were in relation to Desert Edge High School and Centerra. Another location was along Van Buren, east and west of Saravelle. I think there was one also on Yuma in, in that same general area from, well, between Cotton Lane and Saravelle. So as we were getting requests from the, from citizens or things that we would know, we would try to incorporate that into the CIP. We're, currently, we're going ahead with one improvement, which is Saravelle from I, I'm sorry, from Van Buren up to I-10. And we're going to be doing some improvements along the approach on Van Buren westbound to Saravelle. So that's, that was a, a location where a sidewalk was identified, which we're going to incorporate into that project. So I don't think, we, we never did do a citywide inventory of where all these gaps exist. I, I think I heard that that would be something, it would be worth looking at.
I don't know what the time influence that would be, but it would seem to me that that would be worthwhile to sort of have a plan. So when funding does come up, we have some idea. And whether that's developed right now, I think we had a group go through Goodyear and said there are areas that you could clean up that are not selling your city very well with weeds and so on, and, and so that might help that.
Well, I think that also helps identify the goals that were laid out in the Parks Plan. You know, that, that helps part of the system to identify it.
Sure. I can see that. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Go ahead.
These were a few of the long-term improvements that we have in the plan, but I'm going to go ahead and jump ahead to the map. And what the map, it's going to build up. So what we wanted to show first was the corridors, I called them the primary corridors that are in the Parks and Rec plan. So within these corridors, the Parks Plan is showing a combination of paths and trails, sometimes more than one. And onto that, the Parks Plan is also showing multi-use paths, and in some cases, it's a path and a four-foot stabilized trail to the side of it. And those were selectively, the routes were selectively picked. And between the on-street and the off-street, we're trying to work together to kind of get a nice coverage north-south and east-west. And we really would imagine that most people are probably trying to use the, the greenways, the, you know, the Bullard washes, but, you know, at almost every destination other than Bullard wash as its own, but if you're trying to get to work or school or the store, those destinations are on the arterials streets. So trying to make sure that those are as pleasant as possible so that that part of your route is also as pleasant as future biking on Bullard Wash.
Did we have gaps in those areas? The arterial streets and bike paths?
Um, not in, there are a couple of places in the developed area. I know there's some missing bike lanes on McDowell, but currently, there's no room to restripe in order to get them in. So one of the recommendations, you know, very long-term at some point, you know, would have to get widened.
Okay.
And, you know, fit it in at that point.
All right.
And then building on that would be the crossings that were identified.
He just, just to stop it. So if, if that were the case, would that be an attribute that would bump up that widening of that road? I mean, does that, or is it just purely a traffic study or, you know what I'm saying?
Luke, you want to take that? Yeah, Mayor Lord, the, the, the bike lanes, I mean, to be factored into the, the ranking of the prioritization of that road.
Does it move the ranking up a little bit when, when that need is there?
It certainly would help out the justification, you know, like you mentioned McDowell Road, Indian School Road, Litchfield Road, and, you know, those arterials that have been around a while would certainly help the, help the ranking to have that need addressed.
Okay. Because we see from the studies that walking and biking is very important to everybody in the city, and they want to be doing it all the time, and so that's why I asked that question.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Thanks. I want to point out one item, that the multi-use path, this wide 10-foot path that the Parks Plan is presenting and recommending, builds on what is actually in the current non-motorized plan of the general plan, whichever year that was, that there were a system of multi-use paths. So it's not a, necessarily a new idea. And there is a portion of one built on Litchfield Road between about a half mile south of the I-10 and a half mile north of the, the I-10 on the east side. So it doesn't have the four-foot stabilized trail next to it that the, is being recommended, but there is a precedent for that. And then we added layering on that. We added the bike lanes, the proposed bike lanes. I mean, this is showing proposed and existing. We're only showing the arterials to show all the collector streets as well, would get incredibly busy. And then we also added the recommendation for, and I've not come up with the better term, but non-motorized focused arterial, where within the existing curb line of the standard section, you can narrow the road lanes by about a foot, which is still an acceptable width for travel, 11 feet, and then you can And then you can gain just enough room to add a hatched buffer lane for the bicycle lane, just to give that extra comfort for the bicyclists.
Do you follow this?
And then, and then that, the pedestrian environment, we're also proposing recommendations that, you know, additional trees, maybe additional benches and rest areas, just to kind of create, you know, a truly multimodal, enjoyable experience for, for all the users. And then we, we showed that in the cross-section, in this case, it's the major arterial, and how you could take the standard section and fit that in there. And then on the bottom left, it's showing the, the hatched buffer lane for the bike lane, and then the existing multi-use path that's.
I have another question. So, if, this is for staff, so, all right, so we have the bike paths, and you mentioned benches or something, you know, like that in certain areas. You know how we talked about cleaning up the city and landscaping in areas where there isn't any development, so it looks good? But is there a possibility of, and it wouldn't be, we wouldn't have a lot of funding, but, you know, you have to start somewhere, that there might be an optimal place that you could do a bench and a, and a tree and a little sign that says, you know, a restation, or whatever you, you know, whatever you plan. Of course, it'd have to be a total plan, but that we could kind of stair-step it until it was finished, just to, just to show that. I don't know. Is that a waste of money? Is that, you know, is that not, you either do it all at once, or you don't do it?
Mayor, I'll, I'll take that one. You know, it's an ability, and I call them rest stops for either peds or bicycling or whatever, but, yeah, you look at those from a couple opportunities. Certainly Bullard Wash, we are looking at opportunity there to have some areas for some active recreation areas, but also exactly what you're talking about. It's things that we can also do with the private sector to, maybe there's some density trade-offs and things like that, to where we can work with the private sector to have those there, especially if there are services nearby, as long as we have connections that come through public rights a way to get there. We do have opportunities, and it is, we don't have a master plan for it. We have, Bullard Wash is probably the closest, I would presume, that, that we actually get there. And, you know, eventually El Rio. But the others is you really start looking at the connectivity from the, I'll call it the transit-oriented developments, where we can have some of these, I'll call them rest stops, and areas where you can just get out of the sun and those types of things. So, it would be working with the private sector as well.
Okay, thank you. Dwayne?
We have to end at six, correct?
No.
Oh, we don't? Oh, well.
I should have told you that at the beginning. I'm sorry. We, we, we made it so we could be as long as we wanted.
Well, I have, I have four or five questions. I was going to say, I'll send them on to you guys, and you can get back to me.
If you send them on, then we don't get advantage of the discussion of them.
Gotcha.
So, I'd rather have you say your questions here than send them on.
Go ahead and finish. I'll, I'll just wait.
I was gonna, I thought we were also done at six, too. So, I was just going to say, we are continuing to work with Parks and Rec consultant. There was one multi-use path that was being shown that's now being moved potentially a mile over. So, as those changes and input from the public and our different subcommittees, it's evolving a little bit, but we're continuing to try and make both the off-street and the on-street kind of a whole connected system.
Questions, Dwayne?
Okay. So, you hit upon one little thing, not necessarily in conflict with our general plan, but you said the population might be a little different that you were looking at for the future than what maybe MAG said, maybe that's what I heard. But did you find where your planning came in conflict with our general plan and what some of our citizens may have wanted or had said, and you saw something different?
Mayor Lord, Councilwoman Osborne, we, we didn't mention earlier, but we have been working in concert with the general plan, so shared the goals and objectives of the transportation plan early on, and also reviewed the work that that group was doing. Regarding the projections, if I wasn't clear, let me just restate. So, the general plan identified three possible populations, a low, a medium, and a high. And we worked with the medium, so we are consistent with what the general plan populations forecasts are, we're looking at. So, I think we're on the same page with regard to that. And one of the reasons we chose the medium was because that's consistent with what the MAG projections are. So, I think we're working on, on the same page regarding, regarding those issues.
Well, I was just thinking something like if there was something our citizens said that they wanted, or some kind of type of pathway, or something within the city that they wanted and envisioned, but you in reality, as transportation experts, would say, you know what, that's really not going to work. I, that's why I kind of wondered if there was anything that conflicted in that way, but it doesn't really sound like there was. So, that's good.
No conflicts, if you will. I think what we heard early on, and an echo throughout the process, in those early meetings where we attended the general plan open house, we had a questionnaire. And the questions that we primarily heard back from the citizenry regarding transportation dealt with transit and the desire to see transit services. And those extended not only to regular fixed route transit service, but circulator was mentioned, but also ADA services and dial-a-ride, and making sure that that was supported. The non-motorized and bicycling, making those connections, that was something we heard repeatedly. So, I think we're consistent with, with what we heard regarding those issues.
Was there any, in the, in the past, last, say, four or five years, up in Estrella, for example, there was a lot of discussion about, now I don't even remember what NEV stands for, electric, you know, I don't know what you said, golf carts, whatever they are. Was there any discussion about those coming into play in areas? Because we, we've talked about non-motorized, we've talked about regular transportation and, and bus routes, but has there been any discussion about that type of different use?
There hasn't been in our forums. I think one of the things that we pointed out in the plan was to make connections between neighborhoods and adjoining commercial sites, so that, especially in the areas where you have private roads where NEV vehicles may be operating, that they'll have that connection without having to use the arterial network. But it's not an issue that came up through our discussions.
Can those, when you have a bike path, can it be considered a multi-use path, where it's, could be a bike, maybe it is a golf cart, or anything like that? Or is it strictly, I don't know how the rules go, or is it just really, bikes are bikes? It's too dangerous. I don't know.
I am Councilmember Osborne. I would, I don't know the, the rules, but I would guess the recommendation would be that would not really be an acceptable use on a multi-use path.
I've seen in bigger cities where it was a bit larger of a pathway than just a bike path, and it said multi-path type of use. And so, I didn't know what that necessarily meant. And I want to say it was probably Minneapolis that I saw.
We did look at that somewhat when we were talking about the shopping centers, I remember, because we had a number of, and especially on the city center, too, we had a number of people who wanted that ability to, in fact, they even wanted parking spaces at, at the regional shopping centers.
Yes. And that's what I said about five years ago.
And that was from Pebble, that was from Pebble Creek. And we looked at, we looked at Bullard, and we looked at, Brian, do you want to address that? And we looked also at Pebble Creek Parkway as well.
Yeah, Mayor, I think as one of the resident historians here, I can address that. Actually, what we looked at is the ability for NEVs, neighborhood electric vehicles, to get from Pebble Creek to the mall. And that got interesting for this reason, because NEVs cannot go on roadways that are what, greater than 35 miles an hour? So, because of that, you had to look at how you could actually get them there, which road crossings and things like that. We actually looked at taking it through Rio Paseo neighborhood to, to keep it on streets that were under that, that speed limit. But it did require a crossing over the irrigation canal, and, and it was something that was talked about, there were actually numbers that were put to it. But it would require also an agreement on the part of the Pebble Creek Robeson for that to happen. So, we got as far as can it be done? And the answer is yes, it can be done. And again, that was specific from Pebble Creek to the mall. Then it got down to really some of the logistics. Where would it, or how much would it cost? Who would share in that? What about security? All those types of things. And we just never went that extra step to work through those details.
Well, I remember a new one was also, when they first kind of came to be in Goodyear, they spoke about having a lot of NEVs up there, and that may have changed.
Up in Estrella?
Yes.
Yes.
So, that's why I wanted to know that. The, in the future, back, I know it's the 2035 projection way out for, for the most southern end, how do you see the Sonoran Desert Monument and the Wildlife Crossings coming into play down in there? Is it just too far out to, to really make any assumptions right now?
If I may, Mayor Lord, Councilwoman Osborne, we certainly considered that. One of the documents we reviewed was the EIS for the Sonoran Valley Parkway, looking at what those considerations were, and also the recommendations that came out of the Parks and Recreation, a study that was looking at specific crossings, wildlife corridors that might be shared for trails, if you will. That is a little beyond this planning, but I think we recognize the importance of that. And I believe there's some language in the text that talks about coordinating with those identified wildlife corridors to, to address that need.
Okay.
Would, I suppose it probably would come up, wouldn't it, if we ever do connect to eight?
Yes.
The southern route?
Mayor, it certainly would.
Yeah, okay.
And my, my last question, and this may be more to you, is, so we have this item that is standing against our freeway that has this big flashing billboard that happens to be getting money for us, that's sitting there for transportation issues. And I'm wondering.
Could you rephrase that just a little bit more, please, in a little nicer, friendly way?
This, this item that's sitting next to this freeway.
It's called a billboard.
Flashing, oh!
And if you look at it, we call it our art form.
And, actually, it's a beautiful scan.
It is. Yeah, it's art form.
What, what is the thought about those funds, since it has to be transportation-related? Is it too small of an amount of money when it comes to transportation discussions, because it's $600,000 roughly right now versus millions of dollars that we have to look at? Or are there items that we can say, you know what, this can help right now in this type of scenario? Has there been, what's the thoughts been about it?
Mayor, Mayor Lord, Councilmember Osborne, the money has to be used for like public transportation, so the transit portion of the plan. And we have had some internal meetings about that. At, at this time, it was determined, I think, that the, the funding is, is too, too small to, like, completely, to completely fund something, so the city would have to then participate, additional money. So, I, I think at this time, the idea was to, you know, table it for a couple of years until.
Let it build up?
Yeah, yes, correct.
I figured that might be the answer, but I thought I'd ask.
Good. Brian?
Mayor, if I may, and Councilmember Osborne, and that was $500,000 for the one time that, when originally came in for the parking right up there, just off of Dyser north of I-10. Then it's an additional $100,000 a year. So, that's a part that we'll be adding up. The $500,000 is a one time, but the other is ongoing. So, and this would, that would certainly be council direction, policy direction, as far as where those funds would be used. We will absolutely come up with recommendations when we see where there's an opportunity to use those, but that is council direction.
All right. Thank you. Are we, is?
One more slide?
One more slide?
There's actually a few more.
A few more? Okay, go ahead.
The next section after, well, we've talked tonight about recommendations and also some guidelines. The guidelines talk to the truck route issue. They also talk to some future developments regarding transit services, transit facilities. And then we have a section on funding, and so I wanted to just sort of mention some of the options, because the numbers are large that we're talking about, and we've talked about some potential funding sources, and I just wanted to walk through a couple of them here. Certainly the capital improvement plan, the general fund, traditional sources, the development impact fees, which I understand is up for a vote this evening to revisit. And then there's some other obligation, opportunities. The general obligation bonds, which I should mention would not be available before 2018, but one possible option. Sales tax, and I'm going to talk about that in a moment, is an option that a number of other cities in the valley have explored and used specifically for transportation and transit needs. Development improvements, and those might be the half-street improvements or other off-site improvements that are done as a result of the impact development may have on the transportation system. And then federal funding sources, we mentioned CMAC and how the city is using CMAC funds to implement its ITS system, and so that's one example. And then there's state funding sources, and we talked a little bit earlier about the non-motorized trails. And in the past, there was a funding source that was granted through ADOT called Transportation Enhancements, or MAG. Now handles those dollars, and they're called transportation alternatives. The funding's been reduced, but that's still an option, and it might be an option that you would want to explore, for instance, to address some of the gaps in sidewalks when they relate to school safety, because there is still an option to get safe routes to school funding for projects. And although it's competitive, that, that funding, I think it's $4 million a year for the entire region, and those are competitive through, through MAG. It's just one option.
I like that.
Yeah, that's okay.
I mentioned sales tax, because when we started looking at what some of the implementation options were, we realized that quite a few cities in the valley are collecting sales tax for the purposes of transportation and/or specifically for transit services. So, just a quick tour around the valley. In 1988, Scottsdale instituted an eighth of the privilege tax for the purposes of transportation, and not specific to any mode. Tempe has a half-cent dedicated specifically to, to transit taxes. One of the things about the Tempe tax is that there's no sunset on that tax. It's, it's collected indefinitely. Mesa looked at a quality-of-life half-cent sales tax, and a small portion of that is used for transit services. Phoenix, in 2000, instituted 4/10ths of a sales tax for, specifically for transit improvements. Glendale has a half-cent for transportation, all modes. I think they're even using some of that for non-motorized improvements, bicycle and pedestrian. We're all familiar with the Regional Transportation Plan in 2004. That was renewed. That's a half-cent sales tax, and approximately a third of that goes for transit services. Peoria is collecting 3/10ths of a cent sales tax for transportation generally. And those are just some examples of some of the neighboring jurisdictions that are, are using sales tax revenues for transportation. And of course, that would have to go to ballot, and that could be dedicated to any mix of the, of the transportation needs that the city has, and might consider it some future date. So, with that, we wanted to just talk about the next step. So, Laura mentioned coordination with the Parks Trails and Open Space Plan. I think they're having a public meeting later this week, and we'll continue to coordinate with them and talk about the input that they got from the citizenry to understand implications for the non-motorized connections between on and off-street. We'll revise the plan based on the comments that we received from you, and certainly follow up on the questions that were raised tonight, and then prepare a final plan and executive summary, with the hope of bringing that back to you for approval later this spring or early summer.
Good. Questions from council? Comments? None? Well, thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight, and it was exciting reading this, I have to say. I never thought in my lifetime transportation plan would be exciting. So, I have to say, it's a good plan, and I can see a lot of things happening for the future of Goodyear, and I think you could kind of see it in these plans. That's what is so nice. So, thank you very much. Okay?
Council, thank you very much.
All right. That's it for this. So, what we're going to do is we're going to adjourn this meeting, and I know you all want a break, so.